The implication be done by our vice chairman Bernard Hamby. And after that, we do the prayers of the nation of the United States.
Before I begin prayer, just very grieved and very heavy hearted. There's just so much to pray for. I mean, so much to be thankful for. And there's so many other people that we need to be praying for that are grieving the loss. So I'm actually almost lost for words of how to pray through the difficult times that we just went through. But I will make an attempt to offer it up to the Lord. Dear Father, we do come to you this-
Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name.
No ma'am, I'm- I'm praying if you don't know.
As it is in heaven, give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now and at the hour of our death. Amen.
Father, I come to you for this group. And I lift up a lot of prayers there, Father. As I just mentioned, we have all been through some extremely trying and difficult times. Your grace and mercy and protection has been upon us. We survived a horrific hurricane force that we've never, no one in here probably has ever experienced. And without any major injuries, a loss of lives, a ton of loss of property. But we moved further north, dear Father, where our brothers and sisters up there have lost everything, including entire families, their homes, their entire lives have been washed away. So we are thankful for where we are today, but we want to continue, continue to pray for those that have seen so much more disaster come upon them during this time, dear Father. We don't understand it why these things happen, but we do know that your grace and your mercy and your control is what keeps us going. You keep hope alive in all of us. Dear Father, we are particularly thankful for what we've witnessed, how neighbors and different neighbors, different religions, different cultures, all came together throughout our neighborhoods and volunteering to make a difference in those around us, even if they didn't see eye to eye on religion and possibly political stuff. So we thank you for that. Dear Father, we want to lift up a couple of our own tonight. James Burke, who is a recognized veteran in McCormick County. He was in an accident, broke up pretty bad, so we want to pray for him. He's been a cornerstone in our county for many, many years. We just lift him up. And we also want to pray for Ms. Patty Smith's mother, who is in hospital and not doing that well, lift her up, one of our own. And Mr. Banks is not here tonight, so we continue to pray for his recovery and his health as he went, I don't know if he went to the hospital for sure or not, but anyway, we want to lift him up. And then, Father, we, as so many that have come out tonight to be a part of this meeting, we are always appreciative of those that get involved. And we thank you for the public involvement. It means a lot to making this a better county for all of us to live and work. And we thank you for that, just the things, dear Father. We always pray in the precious name of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Our congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call from our quick to the council. Ms. Barnes.
Charles Jennings.
Present.
Bernard Hamby.
Present.
Henry Banks. Charles Cook.
Present.
Jackie Brown.
Present.
GP Collison. Columbus Stevens.
Present.
Thank you, and we do have a corner. This time we have approval of the minutes. These minutes are September 17th, September 26th, and October 2nd of 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, end of discussion. All in favor, nobody right hand. Thank you. Voice speaker, Mr. John Powell.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Columbus Stevens, GP, taxpayers. My name is John Powell. I'm the tax assessor for McCormick County. We are in the process of working on a reassessment, which our last reassessment was in 2020. Based on Department of Revenue, we are required every five years to do a reassessment. Our next reassessment is for 2025. If everything goes well, which it is so far, looking at probably mailing out around in May or June for everybody will get a statement based on, you know, the new market values. And then, basically, then you'll get another tax bill. But you will get a notice of any changes that have been made, but that is every five years. And we're trying to stay on that process. And we have achieved that in the past two reassessments to get to the 25. And that's where we are with that. That's the announcement I'm making tonight, just to let people be aware of that is in the process and will be next year. The next thing I want to address, and this thing is just, I talk too loud as it is. But I was involved in, with Mr. Hamby was talking about, you know, the devastation that happened to the county. I was involved with the damage assessment for the county. And I just wanted to, you know, show my gratitude to, you know, Jason, the EMS sheriff, local city police officers, county roads, utilities. You know, when I was in there, everybody was just working. It was, it was a, everybody was a team, things got done. And when it was time to do the damage assessment and the roads were clear and able to go out there safely, I had a number of volunteers step up. We are, I do have a small office with a lot of area to cover, all within a certain timeframe. I do have an appraiser that worked in the field. Also, Jamie Paulham from the Clunston Extension volunteered her services, which was greatly appreciated. I had two girls from my office that worked the phones for, to help out with in the EMS, in the call stations. Also, our own Mark Warner stepped up, volunteered to help with the damage assessment. And also, the building and codes team, which was Deborah Galloway, Vicky Dorn, Avery Gambrell, and Ryan Branyan. Without probably that help, it would have been a hard thing to get done within a reasonable amount of time before FEMA came in, S E M D, to find the areas that we needed to actually isolate on to show the devastation and damage. And they were here for a full day. Luckily, we did enough work with coordinating with Jason. He did a great job with all that. And the good thing about it is, is these people just wanted to help out. They were all well qualified, as you know, in the building and codes department with, you know, with structural issues and stuff like that. With Mark, he was well qualified. And then the other two, an appraiser and Jamie from the Clunston Extension, she had extensive damage assessment training. I just wanted to give thanks to what I was part of and all that. But what I seen was an overall team effort in to get something like this accomplished, something devastating that I've been here for 31 years and never seen anything like that. So, and I'm sure all, most people have been here all their lives and never seen devastation like that in a short period of time. So, but that's all I really have to say. But my main, my main was, is to announce the reassessment. But if anybody has any questions or concerns, I'll be more than happy to answer them now. Or my door is always open on the second floor. If anybody has a question or a concern, then just give me a call. It's easy when you don't have an office that has a, doesn't have a door on it. So my door is always open.
You have opens.
So whatever, you know, I'm always happy to answer any questions that I can, that I can help with.
Mr. Chair, thank you, John, for the, that update. I do, would like for you to go a step further with the reassessment to help people understand. The reassessment will be, you said, probably mailed out mid, mid, late summer?
Yeah, it all depends on my schedule as things, we just got done a disaster. So that really slowed me, slowed me up and, you know, you know, I got tax season coming up and so.
And that's, that's what I was leading up to. That looks like a tax bill and everybody, everybody starts calling.
Exactly.
Because it's not a tax bill, it's a reassessment.
It really has a number on there that actually has an assessment number on there. So if anybody does get one, we're more than happy to answer that, to estimate basically what your new taxes would be based on the current mileage.
And what year will that take place?
2025. Not this, not this tax season.
Because we in arrears a year, so it would be the year after that goes into place.
It'll be 2025 tax year. And when the bills go out in October next year, this time. Actually, the bills are probably close to being out now, so for 2024. Right. One ask.
Mr. Powell, you might, you might want to mention that when the, when the reassessments do come out, there are appeal procedures that are available.
That is on the form.
To challenge the assessment or to take that, that appeal all the way to the, the assessment board?
Yeah, to the local, and then if it goes past there, then it goes up to the-
This is my new, we can't get in, so call me back.
But yeah, it, it has a, it's a couple step process. I do, you know, if people are interested and want to go ahead and appeal, you can come in. I can have a conference. We can discuss it. I can come out to the house to see if, why the property feels less than what current market value is. We all know, you know, since the pandemic, market values have, you know, risen quite a bit since then. But yeah, there is a step involved with mailing out the form. The form does have, if you want to appeal, it does give you that timeframe to appeal. You'll have 90 days from the date the notices go out. And then the appeal is a, could go to the local appeals board, which is here in McCormick County with citizens. Or after that, if, if you do not agree, or I do not agree, it would go to Columbia, which would be to the administrative law court. Mr. Cook, is that what you asked?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown, yeah.
Thank you.
We want to thank you for your service, how you, you and all the staff got in. Y'all worked as a team getting the job done. We really appreciate that.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Warren, Director of Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, council.
Good evening.
All right, Crystal, I told, I told Crystal that I would speak to whatever picture she put up on the screen first. So we'll start with the airport. We, as part of the, the coming grading project, we have to remove some timber to allow for, for our grading teams to get in there and do what they need to do. Originally, we were anticipating it was about 22 acres plus or minus that we thought would be timbered. Talking to several foresters, we don't think that's enough acreage to be operational for a logging crew to come in and make it work. So what we were, we're expanding that to be basically 55 acres. It's most, there's a good bit of mature pines, there's a good bit of hardwood. So I'm, I'm basically preparing you for, we'll be coming to you soon with a plan to procure the logging of this timber because it is, it's time sensitive. We've got to have this timber out of the way before we start clearing and grubbing to go in front of the grading teams, which will start in the late spring. So, and with all the lumber that's on the ground, right now, the timber companies are pretty busy. So we don't want to, we, we need to move on it. So I'm just preparing you now that we will be coming to you asking for that procurement in the near future. Questions?
Mr. Chair, when you say procurement, are you saying that we gonna have to pay to have it cut? Or we can't sell the timber off of it?
I hope we don't have to pay. I hope it's, we get somebody that's makes it marketable.
When you say procurement, you're talking about a contract to get it done?
Yes.
And then we'll have to make a decision on that?
Yes, that's correct. Yep.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Okay, we'll move on to the industrial park grading project. What you've got on the screen now is a very recent drone view from, from above the, the major part of the park. I'll, I'm gonna go ahead and read you the report I got from the design build contractor. We've accomplished the following. We, we lost basically two weeks of production due to earlier rain events plus a hurricane. But site held up well enough that we're able to get right back on track with the grading this past week. Fortunately, we got the diversion ditches installed prior to the storm, and they worked quite well for a 12-inch rain event, which we were all on pins and needles to see how that was gonna work. We have our erosion contru, erosion crew mobilized to get started on matting the pine slopes, installing the pine baffles, and should be able to get most of the building pads and completed areas seeded in the next couple of weeks. We have cleared and grubbed 24 acres. We've moved approximately 120,000 cubic yards of dirt with a six-man crew, two three-bucket scraper tractors, and two 745 articulated trucks. Mask grading should be completed by the end of next week, this week actually, with good weather, which I think we're gonna get. We'll then get the remaining storm crossings in and start cutting up, cutting out subgrade for the road extension to prepare, prepare for setting up base, installing curb and gutter. Making good progress and hope to be paving early November with closeout by the end of November, if not first of December, pending the grassing taken hold. So that's, that's good news. They've been, they've been hard, they were out there the day before the hurricane hit, putting down, finishing, putting down as much slope stabilizing grass matting as they could. So I gotta give them a ton of credit for everything they've done there. Okay, I think that's all my pictures for, for tonight. Many of you have probably noticed there's a lot of activity in the, the Sherrill McCormick site, which is a former Georgia Pacific site. That is a permitted DOT debris staging and debris grinding site that they're using for, for that purpose, for hurricane cleanup. So we don't, they're not, there's not a tenant coming in there. It's, but it's being put to good use. And Mr. Sherrill was very happy to be able to participate in, in helping the community out. To the former Regal Building, which is owned now by Mr. Cool. The general contractor was actually the first contractor to pull a building permit in the building office's new online permitting system. So they, they have their building renovation permit, and the general contractors started work on renovating the interior of the building. Spec Building. One of the members of, of Project Phaser was here the week of the hurricane. He was able to, he was here the day before. He spent the night in a hotel in Augusta during the hurricane. And he was able to fly out of Charlotte the next day. So he is safely back in Germany. So we're, we're touch and go there for a little while. We have gotten approval on their South Carolina Department of Ag grant application. We're waiting for them to sign off on the Coordinating Council for Economic Development grant application. When we get those, we get that one back from them, we'll bring both of those to y'all to authorize accepting those. The Rural Infrastructure Authority Drainage, countywide drainage study grant. We have executed a grant with, with Thomas and Hutton for that one. We plan to have a kickoff meeting next week with them and, and get started on that. So it's been a long time getting that contract approved by IRA, but with, with a little bit of help from Thomas and Hutton, we got that done. The other project that I wanted to mention, the former admin building downtown McCormick, which we were calling the Augusta Pine. You remember that was gonna be working with a private developer, a joint venture to repurpose that building to be part apartments and part offices. After a lot of discussions and setbacks, primarily because of the, when the feds started raising the interest rates, the cost of capital got too expensive for the developer, and he has decided he can't go forward with that project. So that one is effectively dead at this point. Be glad to answer any questions.
Want to thank you. And that granted, how much?
The Coordinating Council? I think it's 300.
300,000.
Yes, sir. One other thing I'll mention, and I'll make sure Crystal gets a flyer to you guys. If you're in Savannah Lakes Village, this is old news. There will be a fly-in at the McCormick County Airport Saturday, October the 26th. The friends of the McCormick County Airport, which is a great group of volunteers that I work with, they're putting this on and, and we hope to, you know, we're, we're putting it out to the aviation community. We hope to have some, some folks fly in and it's open to the public. So they can come out and see what goes on.
Mr. Warren, along those same lines, are that group, as you mentioned, their involvement and their excitement about working on the airport, are they working in the school like they did last year, teaching stuff about aeronautics? And we had all the kids come out and look at planes and sitting airplanes.
We haven't been able to get that together this school year. We've had a little bit of turnover in that group and-
But that's, that was a next problem.
No, I'm just, yeah, no, yeah.
Really, really neat. So I'd love to see that come back if possible.
Yep, absolutely.
What time of day is that?
The fly-in, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And there might be a food truck there.
Thank you. Need a motion, perfect here, this is order 20, 24, die, zero, sit. And order a man in chapter four of the court, of ordinance of McCormick County Adam and regarding Adam ownership responsibilities, including providing sufficient food and water, proper shelter, veterinary care when needed, imposing restriction concerning the state of animal, provided for the humane care and treatment of animal to prevent suffering and related matter.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Nobody right hand.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes.
Jimmy Collier.
Jimmy, Jimmy.
Thank y'all for letting me be here tonight and to speak on this behalf. Most of y'all know I've been in the livestock business of Sometor all of my life. And I'm here to speak for the humane portion of this ordinance. I think that it does need to be tabled. I know it's all of what's going on right now is maybe a small trivial situation. But in my past, I have seen this where the humane societies and other communities have went way overboard to the point of keeping the farmers from actually being able to farm their own and do that. My objection to this thing, ordinance, and I hope y'all will table it tonight and require a committee to do the research. The tethering on that is an issue that is way too broad. It needs to be limited, and it needs to be where a person can. I walk my dog every once a day, mainly to my shop. And when she's off of my property, she's always on a leash. When she's on my property, she roams free. She doesn't go off of it. But when I go to my shop and I walk over there, I tether her, simply because I don't want her going somewhere else. The way this is written right now, it means no tethering. And it's too broad. And the next question is, if you push this thing out, what you gonna do? Are you gonna build a kennel? Or what are you gonna do with the animals that are being enforced? And who is going to enforce this? Pray tell, I hope it's not the humane society. I hope you will hire someone from the sheriff's office who is well-trained, and you put the dollars in there if you go forth. I'm not against the total ordinance. I'm against the broad base of the ordinance. I'll be glad to answer any questions anybody has. Thank you.
No one else? Got a motion come out of perfect here.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, end of discussion. Not, all in favor? Nobody right hand. Perfect, comments?
Atlanta Singletary.
I have nothing but contempt for everyone sitting on this podium, so I will not greet you because I don't want to lie. My greatest gratitude and respect to go out to all those who came out to help, the police, the first responders, the power company workers, everybody who supported them, as well as the neighbors who had to depend on each other because we were left hanging by ourselves for a long time. You let us down, and you don't care. I appreciate all who stepped up. I want to give you some information you might not realize, but you're a public servant, as well as everybody that works for the county government. They're public servants also. And the opposite of servant is master. Now, I know that word has a bad connotation, so I will use boss. You're looking at all your bosses. You are our employees. You work for us. We are your boss. Servants do not tell bosses what to do. We tell you. The police and first responders can only work with the budget you give them. Those who sit in an office and play on their cell phones all day long should not make more than those who put their lives in danger every day. No one in an office job in this county or city government should be making more than the lowest-paid city police officer, sheriff's deputy, fireman, or EMT. You're not worth it. McCormick County can do anything they want. They can give tax breaks and other incentives for buildings that are never completed, left abandoned, like the cannery outside of Plum Branch, the metal building that's resting in Parksville. in Parksville. You can buy generators to have on hand for the people of this county that you serve, no matter how remote they are. Diesel engines can take, without running, for twelve to twenty-four months with a proper maintenance. Those, these, those generators could be used to power the ice factories around this county. They could be used to power service station pumps for people when they need gas. You have a, a attorney and so does a city. They could enter into an agreement where this would be a done deal. You wouldn't have to run around like chickens with your heads cut off when something happens. They would, they could make an agreement that when this happens, y'all got the, whoever has the authority, hook up a generator and get this county back up and going as quickly as possible. The drugstore's a major priority. Grocery store and staple goods are priorities. The huddle house is sitting empty. It's about to be auctioned off. It could be purchased by this city and county and be used as a ready-made staging area. All the equipment is still in there, large parking lot and its proximity to food line. You need to have hard copies printed and distributed as soon as possible after emergency or even before. You could make blank pages that you filled in by hand. We're in the middle of town and we were isolated for a week. Word of mouth was slow and unreliable. People counted on each other. We didn't see not one of y'all come to our house. Nobody brought us any instructions as to what to do. Some civilized cities give out emergency radios and give batteries ev, uh, biannually to keep those going for things just like this that we don't expect. It's your job to plan for it. There's a generator company in Lincoln County named J and T. Uh, did y'all even...
One more minute. One more minute.
Did y'all even bother to call them? How many of you in your family sat in line for, for ERs and uh, uh, water? And is it really true that the head of the Chamber of Commerce held a meeting to beg for donations to buy fanny coats? These people are members of the party that brought us inflation, spent FEMA money, met up Americans on bringing in and supporting millions of illegals while veterans sleep on the street. By association, they approve of what our government is doing to us. If you like the laziness and incompetence this government shows during every emergency as, vote them back in. If you like being lied to, vote them in again. If you're willing to settle for good enough instead of really working for the good of the people by McCormick, vote them in again. Garbage in, garbage out. A vote for anyone with a D by their name is a vote against America. Maladico TV Amnia.
Questions are on the back of these papers I put on the, uh, seats, but I didn't ask them because I know it's the cratch mid-time to get your lines together before you answer.
Wade Long.
Uh, so last month, I stood up here and asked several questions and I was told that uh, the answer, y'all would get back to me because you said you couldn't answer them on the spot because it wasn't a question and answer uh scenario. Um, I never got answers to any of those questions. So, uh, I don't know how that hap, I mean, I don't know how you do it. I don't know when you do it. I don't know what timely manner means, uh, but I never got those answers. Um, I, you know, in order for the public to trust the ones in power, um, you have to earn that trust and answering questions is the easiest way to do that. Um, so basically that's all I got to say. Uh, the questions are in the minutes, I would hope, from last month. Um, if y'all need an email address, a phone number, text, whatever, um, I think some of you already have it. And that's all I got. Thanks.
No one else has signed up.
Decision, decision item. Item number one, ordinance twenty-four, dash, zero, six, and ordinance to amend in the chapter four of the court or ordinance of McCormick County, Adam regarding animal ownership responsibility include providing sufficient food and water, prophesial to veterinary care when need imposing restriction of animal provided for the humane care and treatment of animal to prevent suffering and related matter. Counsel did destroy, we, we didn't get a motion.
Motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we table this until the next meeting and explore some of the information we heard tonight from Mr. Collier regarding tethering.
Get a second.
I second.
Motion is second. Further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I, Mr. Collier did bring up some important questions that I don't know if, if we've addressed them or looked at them. My question about this document and reading it, it's a very, very detailed document. And, uh, you know, we all love our pets and we wanna protect our pets, but, and I know this helps protect pets that others don't think much of their pets, but uh, it can be a, a huge financial liability on a county, particularly if we have to look at a, um, what do you call those centers where you take the dogs? Help me out here.
County shelter.
It's county, yeah, county shelter because you have to have paid veterinarians and you have to feed and you have to have employees. And I think all those things need to be looked at before we make this a law in McCormick County. I know a lot of works went into it. But my question on tho, that line is, the committee that came up with this document uh, was, was it throughout the county? Do we get input from other interested groups or was this mainly a, a, a project of the Humane Society? But, you know, anytime we do an order, you know, it usually goes to committee or something for, to make sure that we got the whole public's in, input on it. And that's why we have public hearings. But uh, yeah, I'm, I have to agree with Ms. Brown. We just need to look at it some more. We understand it's needed and we're gonna do something, but we need to do the right something and not overkill uh in such a small county do, if we've got this super-major problem of a lot of animal abuse. And then you got, you know, we, we pass a lot of ordinances and we don't have, um, we don't have the manpower to enforce it, you know? And then that takes, uh, takes a, a hu, puts a huge financial responsibility on the taxpayers and the budget. So those things need to be answered before we vote. And we're gonna vote on it and it's gonna pass, but we just need to look at it a little bit longer.
Do a little more research.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Counsel McCook?
I think, I think tabling is probably a, a good idea, although, um, I strongly support an ordinance that protects both animal rights, uh, the rights of animal owners, um, and that, uh, requires the humane treatment of animals, uh, that are kept as, um, as pets. Uh, but I'd, I, I personally have a number of questions with respect to some of the things that are in here, particularly with respect to enforcement. Um, because I think some of the, uh, the wording is a little, um, is a little unclear. Uh, and I'll give you just, um, uh, an example. Um, there's, uh, there's a provision in here, um, um, that says that you can be fined if your animal gives offense to others. Um, and it's not well-defined with respect to what that means. And particularly if it's going to be legally enforceable and it can go to a judge, um, that's, um, um, that's something that's, uh, that's rather uncertain and would present problems, I think, for judicial review, particularly in the imposition of, of any fines. Um, I think the, uh, there's a question with respect to what constitutes excessive noise. Um, because I also think that that is undefined and would be very difficult for a judge to determine what is, uh, excessive without, um, without some kind of, um, quantification. The, um, I think the issue of quarantining and where you would quarantine animals, uh, is an issue that, uh, we haven't answered. There's a provision in there that says counsel is not obligated to create, um, uh, any animal quarantine, uh, pins for, uh, for enforcement. But the law, uh, as, as written does require, uh, the quarantining of animals. And unless we have an answer with respect to, uh, where those animals are going to be quarantined, who's gonna be responsible for them, how they're gonna be fed, how they're gonna be kept and so on, uh, for the required period of time is something that's not answered in here. The other thing that, uh, that troubles me is that this is a, uh, an ordinance with respect to, um, uh, animals, humane treatment of animals and so on. But the, uh, about half of it, uh, the last half of it, uh, is essentially on littering, um, which is only peripherally related to the issue of animal care. And I'm, I'm, in my perspective, uh, I don't have a problem with having an ordinance on littering in the county and control of that, but it seems to me that that should be a separate ordinance, separate and apart from animal care. Um, and I don't, I haven't looked at the, uh, I didn't have the opportunity to look at the, uh, the county ordinances to determine if we have something currently in writing and on paper with respect to littering. Uh, but I would strongly recommend that, um, when we take a look at this, that, uh, we have a, if we're going to have an ordinance on littering, we do that separately, separately and apart from, uh, an animal care ordinance and that we simply have a reference, um, in the animal care ordinance to the, the littering, uh, ordinance if, uh, if that's appropriate. Uh, Mr. Callison, do we have, have anything, um, existing in our ordinance with respect to littering?
We have an ordinance, um, ordinance eighteen, dash, oh nine, which it, it basically is, has not changed in this particular ordinance. It's, it's ordinance with, adopted eighteen, oh nine. Um, in the McCormick County Code of Ordinances, it's all included under the same, I don't know how that was put together, but it's all included under the same category of animals. Um, and it follows, uh, we, we currently have an animal ordinance. This just further expands that and it particularly addressed tethering and that kind of thing. But the littering part that's included in this ordinance twenty-four, oh six is exactly what we already have. Now, it might be good to separate those. I don't know why it was codified as...
I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure either.
I'm not, I don't know how that was codified in that section, but it was a separate ordinance, eighteen, dash, oh nine, that established the, the, the same thing that's in that ordinance you got right there. So we might want to, might suggest having a workshop on that, actually. And go, there's some, there's some different language that can be, can use that I've looked at. And we could separate those two out because it does seem, it seems unusual when I first saw that in the code that it was listed under animals as opposed to littering.
Yeah. And, and also if you look at, um, some of the, some of the language that, that's in here, um, there is a significant amount of repetition. Um, it's covered in, um, you look over on page six, most of, uh, most of page six is simply repetition of things that are already in there. Uh, it's our, it's simply a restatement of, 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 of what's in there. So I think, I think this does need to be looked at again. I think we need to, uh, to sit down and have a discussion about some of this because I'm, I'm, I'm worried that if this, if this becomes an ordinance that is enforceable by law, there are some things in here that are, are simply not quantifiable and would be extremely difficult for a judge to interpret and to hand down any kind of, uh, reasonable penalties. Um, what is an ex, what is excessive noise? What is, uh, I mean, there are a lot of things in here that are really not specified. So, um, I support tabling this, um, although I think, I think there is a need for an animal ordinance. Um, and, um, I think we ought to, uh, I think we ought to proceed with doing something that's proper and that serves, uh, the entire public.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would add to Mr. Cook that, uh, I think would be very appropriate, as already been mentioned by our attorney, possibly a workshop that would all be involved, uh, even law enforcement and the public, um, to work through this so that we can tailor fit this ordinance for McCormick County. And how, and get all these an, questions answered versus just, just approving it tonight and, and then creating a lot of discrepancies that we'd have to deal with in the future.
Yeah, that's what the motion is to table.
Yeah. And I was just adding that to it. We can, you can set up the...
We want to protect that. We all want to protect our animals. That's right, animal rights. Order, is it fu, further discussion? Not all in favor? Nobody right?
Item number two, resolution zero-five, dash, twenty-four. Bunn, of County Employees, Counsel to Consider Passing Resolution Zero-Five, Dash, Twenty-four. Get, get a motion.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second, uh, before we call for the vote off. But Stephen, did you give us roughly how much it's gonna cost?
We've been paying approximately six hundred dollars per year. So it's a blanket, it's a blanket coverage throughout the county for every position that anybody...
Nobody fault on that blanket.
After the increases this year, it won't be that much difference. It's just that we do it every year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Counsel McCook?
Just a, uh, a quick question, and that is, how many, um, um, county employees do we have under individual, um, liability, um, bonds?
It's a blanket bond.
So it's, it's collectively the whole position? So if someone leave a position, that position is still covered? So it's not, it's not individual on whoever wants to sign up for it, but all of the positions are protected for anybody that handles any money in this county?
Well, the, the, uh, the appearance of the wording of this is that this would substitute for, uh, the blanket, uh, bond. It would substitute for individual bonds.
It does. But before...
You got it right.
Before they were able to do a blanket bond, they had, used to have to have individual bonds. Certain positions.
But it's been like that for the last ten, twenty years.
Well, I, I understand that. So this is, this is not new? We've been doing the...
Every year.
We've been doing the blanket bonds every year?
Try to pay it thirteen years.
All right, fine.
We, we went to the blanket bond because you saved your tight payer money.
Okay.
To have an individual, okay.
Then answer my question.
And one other, individual bond costs more than a blanket bond. That's why you do it as a county.
No one else, all in favor? Thank you. Committee reports. Counsel McCook.
Mr. Chairman, we know we all went through...
Yes.
Um, a serious crisis with, um, the hurricane and a lot of community people stepped up and did things that needed to be done. Um, county did things that they need to be doing and several employees, um, worked out, passing out things at the different sites. And we just wanna thank everybody for being a part of that. Um, and the community really came together and we set our differences aside to do what needed to be done. And I hope we continue to do that, working forward for the good of the county.
Yes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counsel McCook?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Prior to the hurricane, I did attend a few meetings. I don't need to go into those. But it was business as usual until that early Friday morning when the hurricane blew through. And I just want to thank the, the members of EMS who worked their tails off, including the, the dispatch center, which were snowed with calls. And everything that was done, the, the guard came in and, and helped us distribute ice. There were food distributions that were made. There were a number of issues that needed to be resolved. And personally, I, I used my cellphone a lot for the first few days after the hurricane. I had to drive to Greenwood County in order to have any, any kind of service, until that was established at EMS and we had, and we had that service available there. But there was a lot of work that needed to be done. And I recognize that all council members may not have gotten out into the, the public to help with a number of things. But I do want to assure everybody in this room that all council members were working very diligently within their districts, if not the entire county. I drove quite a number of streets in my district and in other parts of the, the main thoroughfares in the county to identify those areas on a continual basis and to work with our service providers to make sure that they knew what, what power was out, what telecommunications was out. I worked with the, with the Verizon people to figure out what was going on and why we didn't have cell service and try to work on that. There was, there was a lot of work that was going on behind the scenes, probably, that, that not very many, many people saw. But I want to assure you that county council was extremely actively involved every day of the emergency. And, and I want to thank them for, for what they did. Excuse me. And to thank the public in general for their, for their understanding. I know out at SLV, the, the county has helped out there, but during the initial few days in which we had so much devastation, there were a number of roads in the village that, that were closed because of downed trees. Excuse me. And you had Kirk Smith and his community services crew that were out, along with a lot of residents who worked with, with their chainsaws and everything else to clear the roads so that people could get out of their driveways and, and go out to try to seek any amenities that they, they needed. So, there was, there was a lot of community participation in terms of at least getting the roads open and, and trying to restore some semblance of order. So, I appreciate the, the work that's been done by the, the community as a whole. And I'm sorry that there may not have been as much community effort as a lot of people wanted there to be. But I assure you that things were, were done as expeditiously as they possibly could be. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Just real shortly, just continue to thank every single person for their involvement. I thank, in effect, that all of us and pretty much everyone was involved in one way or another, from cleaning up the neighbors' yards to cutting people out. So, I've, I've just very thankful, very impressed with the coming together of all the residents of this county. It reminded me, wasn't quite as bad as nine eleven, but y'all remember after nine eleven, this entire country came together to help each other during such a tragedy. So, even though the whole country didn't get hit, the whole country was definitely watching the whole East Coast from the devastation we had. And it really shows there's still a lot of hope in humanity for doing the right things when people are in need and hurt. So, I thank y'all for that. I did attend several of the EOC meetings, very organized. People need to realize, we are a small county and our, our resources are limited a lot of times. And this was a huge monster that came after us. And to come out of that, basically very small injuries and no fatalities. I know it was reported to me from Augusta, out on the lake, they clocked some hundred and twenty-five mile an hour winds. And that's pretty tough for these old pine trees that we have around. If you don't believe me, I probably got about forty core trees in my yard that are about a hundred feet tall. So, I'll be cleaning up for a long time. But anyway, I'm just rambling, but thank everyone. We just, I'd love to be able to call everyone out, but everyone was involved and worked a lot of long hours, particularly our emergency services, as you mentioned, Mr. Cook, our nine-one-one people. I can't imagine the number of calls she got coming into the, people asking questions. But just very proud of McCormick County and the people and what was accomplished through this disaster.
Thank you. Again, we'd like to thank county council. We'd like to thank Stephen and all your staff and all your departments and shared department and the Baptist Church. You don't like to start calling our names because you caught, you'll miss someone. But all you done, a super job. McCormick County hadn't experienced anything like this. I know it's seventy-five years. Maybe eighty years, almost. Now, some of you in here can talk about eighty plus, but up to eighty. McCormick had never been entire shutdown. We done had storms, but not no storm like this. No, we know that going forward. You can punt, you can do this and do that. And that has been stated. We're a small town community. Some are going to be complaining in a few weeks when you get your tax notice. But then you talk about you want all these services, you can't have all these services without cost. And that, that we doing thing and we did like to say each and every one year, how you got in and what, what, what. And I saw people taking water, food, driving all throughout the county. Did we get to, get to all houses in McCormick County? No. But someone got there, eventually got there. But we were working just like a team. And we just thank you. And we, and people just went out the way, making sure that we got plenty of food, poor hands in there come in. Humane Society working till about nine o'clock Saturday night, giving out food. Not only food and water, they were giving out hygiene products and things. And people were, were still smiling. So, that's what it take, working together. And that, and we show that we can come together and work together. And I just think, and I see some in here, much younger than me, and they were able to do a whole lot more than I could do. And I said, we just thank, thank you for doing that. And we're going to continue work for the betterment of all, because we done been proven that we can work together. And that's what we done. And it, it take a little time for anything. Don't get upset because you ain't number one. But you, you going to be in that number. You just won't be number one sometime. And that's what we all had to, one thing I got from this, let us don't be separate. Let's be thankful. God spared our lives. We just think about North Carolina. And just go down south to Georgia, that's Richmond County. People still don't have latrits. People don't have nowhere to stay. Yeah, we got a few people in McCormick had to move out of their residence. But within, most of them, ten day time, we had our latrit back on. Yeah, we lost our food, but we didn't lose our lives. But we can buy more food. And FEMA is now helping us. They helping us. Nobody got a check before McCormick County got a check. So, the government is fair trying to do what it can do for all who qualify, you know? So, we just again, thank how we came together and working together. And there were law enforcement people there all the time to protect us. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like, I don't know what would be appropriate, but I would love to see maybe our EMS director or some of our directors do a critique or some sort of evaluation at a later date where we all get back to normal. Because we did have, we've got a lot of weaknesses. We were called, every county was called short. And I think, I see Mr. Jason shaking his head, be a great idea. Not a name calling, not trying to fuss at anybody because he didn't do this or didn't do that. But I would love to know, I'd love to see a report. So, if this does happen again, we would be a little bit more better prepared than we was this last time.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would, I would support that. We do, we do need to turn this into a learning experience, because there are a lot of things that we, that we learned in this kind of a serious emergency that we had not anticipated. And we need to be prepared in, in the off event, God forbid, that it should happen again.
Just a couple of things. All of the concern just been expressed, it's already been discussed. We're in the process of planning, do some strategic planning in the very near future. Emergency management has met with administration and we've discussed it. Just want to give you an update. Based on the fact that Plan A has stalled in terms of Augusta Pine, we need to go to Plan B. There are three areas that we need to concentrate on immediately shortly after the election. County council need to start thinking in terms of, and we need to meet with Chair, Standing Committee that handles buildings. We're going to have to do something in reference to the election registration office and some other office, such as law enforcement and the courthouse. We actually literally have been working on some things for the past year or so. We're going to roll out some information to you all in terms of how we anticipate paying for these things in the future without imposing any other hardship on taxpayers. We do have some bonds that would be maturing in the future. And this would fall under the cap and improvement project. That concludes my report, sir.
Well, Ms. Anya, you know how to coordinate. Thank you. The motion to go in a second session is to review and discuss and receive legal advice regarding proposed revision, modification to the agreement with SLV Windfall Group LLC concerning FLC properties and in SLV and discuss personnel matter concerning reparation, reparation and emerging service and vehicle replacement option concerning administrative.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor? Move ahead. Again, we'd like to thank each and every one for coming out tonight to our meeting. Thank you.